Just a reminder, if anyone is going to want to share some information with the board during our public comment, it happens about the first fifteen minutes or so, there's a sign up book in the back there for people who desire to speak to them. So, welcome. Welcome to ISB 709, Duluth Public Schools, and this is our monthly school board meeting. It's Tuesday, July nineteenth, and it is six thirty-two. And we're here at Duluth East tonight, and I'm saying this mostly for the community that is going to watch this on our YouTube channel later tonight, or tomorrow, or in the following weeks. I know that there are many community members that find watching school board meetings really something they desire to do. Really, they do. So, we welcome it, and we, you know, we have not been live streaming our school board meetings for the past year because of our transition from our Hox building to the transition to the new service building that we were building up on the hill. So, the availability of live streaming is just really an expense we decided not to do as a board. But we still do record and then post to our YouTube and to our Channel 187. So, again, we welcome you, and we're at Duluth East, and we're gonna be at Duluth East now the remainder of this school year. Last school year, we held our school board meetings at Denfeld High School in their media center, and then this season, this school year, we will host our Tuesday, once a month, meetings here at the East campus. So, we encourage those of you that are just listening tonight, or tomorrow, and those of you that are here tonight. Sometimes teachers assign kids to come to school board meetings and take notes and see how the process works for elected officials, but we welcome our community to come and view in person, and certainly, we encourage public comment to come and share acknowledgements, concerns, questions that you would like the school board to hear. So, again, welcome to our ISD 709 Duluth Public Schools School Board Meeting. It is Tuesday, July twelfth, or July nineteenth. I wish it was the twelfth, that'd give us one more week of vacation, but it is six thirty-four. And I will turn to Clerk Oswald, and she takes the role of the school board and administration.
Kelly Jerk Eater is on her way, so, Member Kirby.
Here.
Member Lockwood Kim.
Here.
Chair Lowball.
Here.
Member Oswald, here I am. Member Zdowski.
Present.
Member Sandholm.
Present.
Superintendent Vegas.
Here. Purge Lake.
Assistant Superintendent Bonds.
Present.
And we have no deputy clerk anymore, so that's so bad.
Just temporarily.
HR Director Severance.
Here.
And Secretary Paquette.
Here.
And both our student reps are excused for today. We have a forum chair.
Thank you, Clerk Oswald. Next on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, so I ask you to rise, and the flag is right here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it belongs. One nation, under God, indivisible, just as it is for all. It's been a while. And again, we wanna welcome Superintendent Vegas. He is joining us virtually, which is allowable by our Minnesota statute and by MSBA guidelines, as long as we post that he is in a public place and is able to also be viewed by community that would want to be a part of it, and we appreciate that Superintendent Vegas is right now at a conference for superintendents and communication directors across the maybe Midwest or country. And really, it's a great opportunity for our district to continue to move forward and educate ourselves and get what's going on across our country, and for us to continue to lead the Duluth Public Schools in the best way. So, thanks for joining us from Chicago, I believe.
Yes, thanks. Now, it's been a great experience and learning a lot down here with our communications officer, Adele Willens.
Thank you. I'm looking, board members, for approval of our agenda tonight. You had the agenda posted on Board Book, and I'm looking for a motion.
So moved.
Member Lockwood Kim, but is there a second?
Second.
A second by Board Member Zdowski, and I'm gonna open it up for a discussion because I know that there needs to be an amendment. So, I'm looking, we will not be able to do number twelve under resolutions from committee reports. We will not be able to do EHR-7-22-3905, so I'm asking to, a motion to pull that from the agenda tonight, and we'll put it on for next month. The DWEU union contract just needed more opportunity to have their membership vote.
Motion.
So, Member Sandholm makes the motion. I need a second.
Second.
Member Eater is seconding the amendment, so now we vote on the amendment, so all those in favor of amending by pulling out twelve E say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries seven-zero. And then, we will now vote on the agenda as amended. It's been motioned and seconded, so all those in favor of the, tonight's Tuesday, July nineteenth agenda as amended, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero. Thank you. So, next on our agenda is number five. It's something that we do every month, and it is school and community recognition, so I turn it over to Assistant Bonds. Assistant Superintendent Bonds.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Got a title raise there.
I know.
Would you, Eater, would you like to come up for students? Stay there, because I'm pretty sure the board would love to say something to you after I do the recognition, as well as you have the opportunity to share as well, so I'm welcome. Dear members of the board, Duluth East Theater students performed at the Hennepin Trust Theater Spotlight Showcase. The Spotlight Showcase is Minnesota High School Theater's biggest celebration. Over sixteen hundred students participate in the awards and recognition event presented by the Hennepin Theater's Trust Spotlight Education Program. Twenty-two cast members from Duluth East revived a number from their fall show, Freaky Friday, the musical, and performed onstage at historic State Theater in June. Congratulations to all of these students, and thank you for representing Duluth Public Schools. Students, would you like to share anything?
Yeah, my name is Casey, I'm a senior.
My name's Lucy Salma. We are both recently graduated seniors and the mother-daughter duo in Freaky Friday. And I'm going to University of the Arts in the Fall to study musical theater, which I couldn't have thought of East Theater Program.
Yeah, so our directors just asked us to share something that the theater gave us, and to me, something that the theater gives all the students is confidence, because it's really, especially as a senior and junior, seeing the freshmen come into the program and just get so much more confidence by the end of the year, especially Molly over there. I really got to watch you just blossom into this wonderful performer, and I can't wait to see what the rest of the freshmen and sophomores do.
Yeah, and for me, I would say theater at East really gave me a sense of community and a group of people that I can always fall back into, and, you know, a bunch of people that I love with my entire heart, and I'm super proud of.
I'm Thomas. I'm also a recently graduated senior, and for me, East Theater has been an amazing opportunity to get out of like my comfort zone and perform for people, and also, most of my friend group is people that I met through theater at East, and so, yeah.
I'm Mia, and I am a freshman, or I was a freshman this year, and the third theater program here gave me really good space to go to after school when we would have rehearsals. It'd just be, we walk in, and it'd just be this comforting place to be myself.
Yeah, so I'm Molly. I will be a sophomore this year, and going into my freshman year, I was really nervous about where I would fit, and if I would make friends, and all of the common worries, but joining the theater group, the Drama Club, was really a place for me to be myself. I did have to try that hard to make friends. People were just there and welcoming, especially Casey and Lucy and Thomas. All were very just supportive people that I could always go to if I needed anything, whether that be academic help, theater help, or just a hug at the end of the day. So, really amazing place to be a part of.
I'm Adriana. I'll be a junior next year, and last year was my first year doing theater, and I always wished that I'd started so much sooner because of community and the people and just everything there is just so awesome, and I really wish I had gotten into that much sooner. So, thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
Congratulations. We always love pictures of success and fun, and I think the directors could come and get it, and so, come on. Thank you both so much for bringing your students to us as well. Absolutely. All right, everyone's smiling. I took a few. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Love the T-shirts.
Have a great summer.
Thank you, thank you. Next on our agenda is our public comment, and so tonight, eagerly awaiting the clipboard, tonight we have public comment, and we have one speaker tonight, and I'm really glad that we have someone coming to share, and it's Jen Loubel.
Jen Loubel, yep.
Thank you.
So, hi, I'm Jen Loubel. I'm an OSS intermediate at East. I work in the counseling office. And I want to say thank you to all of you for all that you do for us, our students and employees of the district. The only thing I wanted to say was how we just completed our contract negotiations, and we're here to see how that all turns out for you guys tonight. And I just wanted to say that it was such a pleasant process, so thank you to Teresa and to Kate, who's not here, but I went into it kind of terrified, thinking I have no idea how this is gonna go. I'm really new to the whole process, and it was great. I thought it went really well, so I just wanted to say thank you to HR for your hard work and the work of us. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Jen. Thank you, thank you. And that brings us then to our next agenda item, and that's reading communications and petitions, and I'll double-check with Executive Secretary Paquette, but I have not seen any, and I don't think any have come in in the last twenty-four hours, and so, we will move on to number eight, which is the report of the superintendent. And under the report of the superintendent, there are three items. There are the student reports that they are, that they share with us. It's the superintendent's report, and then it's just a quick review of schedules of meetings and events coming up for school board members that we need to just be on our radar. So, I'll turn it over, you know, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Vegas, because you usually do do the introductions for our student reps, and I've got board members that are gonna share their words, so we can go ahead and do that if that...
Sure. Now, thank you so much, Chair Lowball, and thank you to everybody who's shared it so far. It's great to see a wonderful community theater group. That's one of the positive things that we see here as well. I'm here for the conference, but also, my son ended up coming into town to do some professional acting too, so I think that people following their dreams and following the arts is really, really critical. But our student reports are really exciting. I know they're a little shorter in the summer because there's the transition, but I think it's great that we're able to share some positive things going on. There are many, many positive things happening in the district. I think it's important to ask the question, what's going well, and the student reports highlight a lot of that, so I will turn it over to board members. Thank you.
So, our first report will be from Denfeld's Soraya Crawford, and Member Zdowski is reading her report.
Yeah, so the following is a report we got from Soraya. Good evening, everyone. I hope your summer is going well. My report is a bit short due to the summertime, so I apologize, but no apologies needed, so you're watching. So, the report, the custodial and maintenance staff, along with some Denfeld students who have been hired to help this summer, have been hard at work cleaning and preparing the school for the upcoming school year. Summer school at Denfeld is wrapping up next week, which will open up the rest of the building to be cleaned and reset for the next year. Nineteen students attended the close-up program in Washington, D.C. during the week of June nineteenth to learn more about our government and how to be engaged citizens. Our summer dash program has been operating daily through our full-service community school, serving between five and fifteen kids depending on the day. Students participate in activities that are based in creating resiliency by connecting to the outdoors, positive experiences, and relationship building. The program brings in community partners like UMD for STEM activities and Planned Parenthood. It is aligned with the summer school calendar to provide activities, tutoring, and an opportunity to make up time required for summer school. Denfeld hosted the district-wide Indian education enrichment program for secondary students. Twenty students participated in a variety of cultural activities, including ribbon skirt making, drum making, traditional lacrosse, and college visits to Northwood and Fond du Lac Community Colleges. The program accumulated with a trip to Red Cliff and Madeline Island, learning about the tribal fishery program, tribal food sovereignty, music and storytelling from Frank Montano, and visited the burial site of Chief Buffalo and discussed treaty rights. School staff have been completing a lot of data entry for the twenty-one-twenty-two school year to both close the books on last year, as well as use the data, including the school climate survey, for planning the twenty-two to twenty-three school year. Thank you so much, and I'm excited to give back to everyone.
Thank you. Thanks for sharing that, but, you know, I know, Soraya, if you watch this tomorrow, you know, thank you for doing a report, even when you're not here, and our reps have been doing that all term, which I really appreciate, but, you know, I think you misspoke, Soraya, when you said there wasn't a lot going on, because your report had so many wonderful things going on during the summer months, and for us as board members, we don't always know everything that's going on. I know you think we do, but we don't always, and so, a lot of what Soraya shared is really, you know, really exciting, and so, I'm glad she was able to share. And our next report is from our East rep, and her name is Ailee Nos, and Miss, Member Kirby will read.
Hi, everyone. I first want to apologize for my absences, as it has been unfortunate timing for the past couple of meetings that I have been unable to attend. Luckily, as it is suffered, there's naturally less to report of. At the end of the school year, leadership groups like the executive board and association chose their new boards, presidents, and officers for the coming year. Martin Dahl and Oliver Miatke are the association presidents, and Rocco Paulson and I are the next year's executive board presidents. Both groups had their own celebrations with the new members and have begun bonding exercises, as well as planning for the next year. There has been, there's also been lots of reflection of past events, how they can improve, and thoughts on what we want the next school year to look like. In June, exec and association volunteered at Grand Hawn's Marathon, as well as Chang's Rupart Festival. Association helped set off and hand out Uber pie and exec the face painting. Ariel is going to be next year's fall musical and call back for mid-June. Rehearsal starts in August. East has been having strength and agility training, as well as open gym for many sports with upcoming seasons such as volleyball, football, basketball, et cetera, on Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays. Summer school starts in June twenty-first and ends August twenty-seventh. Outback had an ice cream social at the end of the school year to congratulate freshmen on completing the year. This is a tradition loved by many. Garden Club is a newly emerging club that began at the very end of the school year with the desire to reutilize the Prodigy Garden on the side of the school. With help from teachers and many students, they have been able to revive and liven up the space with many vegetables planted and ready for harvest in the fall. They water and weed on Monday and Wednesdays consistently throughout the summer. Cross-country running has started captain's practice, and the official season starts in August. Their captains are Veronica Waman, Oliver Miatke, Amelia Wise, Tyler Start, and Aiden Tevall.
And again, another, another report that starts off saying there's not a whole lot, but there's always a whole lot going on, and it's really nice. But a couple of things, just the new boards are always kind of fun to hear, and the kids are excited about leadership, and just I thought that Ailee, when she said they reflect back on what, what they did well and what they can do better the next time, is always, always something we love our students to be able to do, so thanks to Ailee. Moving on to our next item is superintendent's report. That's in our board book as well.
Thank you, Chair Lowball, and I appreciate the group meeting tonight, and I also appreciate Assistant Superintendent Bonds, who will be facilitating the remainder of the meeting after, after my report, just because of some of the other activities taking place here, but really, really wanted to say how much we appreciate all the work going on this summer. I will, I will start with our presentation, and I'll bring it up right now. One second. Here we go. Everybody can see that? Great. So, a few topics we have going on. We have the student representative reports, just a very brief COVID planning update, brief update on our board work session that's coming tomorrow, a very brief update on strategic planning, as well as a welcome back unity celebration that we have, and a reminder related to our free and reduced lunch. So, COVID, of course, we have, COVID is still around us when we look at the, the different variants that we have for Omicron. It's important that we continue to monitor our current situation, but at this time, as of August first, the Minnesota Department of Health will transition COVID-nineteen surveillance in pre-K twelve in childcare settings to a facility reporting situation. So, basically, we're no longer reporting on individual cases or submitting aggregate numbers, similar to what we do with flu or other things of that sort. The different childcare centers and schools, they will be receiving a weekly email with a link to the report, so submitting in that way. We do plan to make sure that that information is available for our public, so that people can continue to monitor the COVID rates, as we are as well, as well as our practices. But at this time, we don't anticipate any mandated mask wearing in the near future. We want to make sure that we continue to monitor situations to ensure safety, but we don't anticipate any, any new mask wearing in the near future. Related to our board work session, tomorrow we're meeting, and we have a board work session with the following agenda, really allowing the board to reflect on, you know, what is it that they're hoping for with their legacy, thinking about like, how can we work together to make sure that we're focusing on the core of our work, and really focusing on our governance role with policy, but also providing steering for the board and for the district and community related to education. Then, focusing on the education leadership system, as well as a current view of the current reality of what we focused on for the past couple of months. There's an activity called Meeting in the Public Square, and I asked the board to consider some topics that could be, you know, challenging problems, to put through that, that use of that tool, to think about how are we making sure we're taking account all stakeholder input and then moving forward. Then, there will be a very brief update on our strategic planning, as well as some work by the board on putting together a three-year board governance plan, taking a look at developing that three-year plan, and also thinking about as a board, what are our goals? What is it that we hope to accomplish during the twenty-two-twenty-three school year? And we do have some policy work, some things that we want to take a look at tomorrow as well. Regarding strategic planning, we're in a little bit of a state of pause. We are, during the summer, it's, it's, most districts who are working on strategic planning take a little bit of a pause during that time, but again, our process focuses on assessing our current reality, describing the vision of what our optimal state of education should look like, and then putting together what our strategic plan looks like. And again, planning efforts have focused on internal operational plans at this point during the summer, and that broader strategic planning with the community will resume in September. Then finally, a welcome back unity celebration. This is something really exciting. Mr. Bonds was the, kind of the, the person that came up with this concept, but I think it's great. There's been a lot of enthusiasm and a lot of development towards it, and if there's anything you want to add, Assistant Superintendent Bonds. We will be holding a school year kickoff event at Bayfront, and that will be held on August twenty-ninth from four to seven p.m. on, it's a Monday, and using that Bayfront facility. That's something that was donated to us at this point, so we're really looking forward to it. It's meant to be really a unifying event to celebrate our schools as one district. I realize we have multiple schools, but it's really about we are Duluth. There'll be entertainment, food trucks, different vendors and guest speakers, and possibly a dump tank with myself and maybe Mr. Bonds and others, but we're really looking forward to that event, and additional information will be shared in the coming weeks. Then, of course, we've been talking a lot about free and reduced lunch, and the, because of the COVID pandemic, we've been on a pause related to the paperwork for free and reduced lunch, but we will begin going back to paid meals starting on September sixth, and I won't go through all the details, but the, the information is here, and we have a robust plan for trying to get students involved and get parents signing up for their applications. There's a slight increase in the meals. It's a ten percent increase, and that's due to the, we've all seen with the economy, we've had pretty significant food costs going up, and so, there's a, there's a slight course change there, so that the, these meals have gone up from ten cents from elementary at two dollars and seventy cents to two ninety-five for the middle and high school. But no matter what, no matter how much a student owes, we always make sure every student has a meal every day if they've needed it. And so, we will be continuing to look for different grants. I know we're looking at some farm-to-school opportunities and different things to fill in those gaps, as well as thinking about different things for, for support of our schools. We're always looking for lunch supervisors. We're always looking for people within our nutrition department. There's some pretty significant hiring needs there, but we continue to offer really robust programming and really great things going on, and are thankful to Sheila Oak, as well as the members of her team. And that concludes my report, unless there's any questions.
I always like to give significant time for questions. We just kind of got, done listening to the superintendent report with the main ideas, but I'll just give every board member a little bit of a chance to ask anything, explain more. I guess I'm really excited about the gathering at Bayfront and the potential of having some district leaders at that dump tank.
That was huge, Joe.
Of course.
Always, always make some more members.
School board chair.
Yeah, you know, I, I've been in a few, you know, so I certainly know how to fall. But, and again, our free and reduced lunch update, thanks for getting the word out for those of us that will watch this tomorrow. Maybe there's an opportunity for our, our print media and our Facebook partners to push some of our ideas out as well. I'm sure you're learning a lot about how we can use better communication or increase our communication abilities at the conference you're at now, especially with things that, forms that would really help our budget as, as far as reduced, free and reduced lunch and, and that area.
Very much so. It's been, uh, a really great learning opportunity, uh, both in networking with the leaders and getting new ideas, uh, with, with, uh, our communications officer, Sarah Dell Wellens, starting in her role. There's a lot of, uh, sessions on, on being new to the communications role, as well as how to best work with the superintendent, how to best, uh, listen to the community and get that messaging out there and get that, the, those opportunities for communication to the community and communication from the, the community so that we can make sure that our, our work we do is really well informed by the multiple voices of the people we serve. Um, but I also, uh, want to say thanks to my team. I know that, uh, with, with me stepping off from, from, uh, this meeting, they say a lot of times, um, the key to good leadership is making sure that there are, are people able to, to step in and step up. And I have complete confidence in, uh, Mr. Mr. Bonds, our Assistant Superintendent, as our, our number two person in command, as well as, uh, Director Severance for Human Resources. So thank you, and I hope everybody has a great night.
Thank you Superintendent. Again, when you leave, that just gives us permission to sign you up for some of those things at the, uh, at the Bayfront activities.
I've been in many a dunk tank and tape, taped to walls and, and many things like that sometime, even pretty much anything. I can even have, I've even had my head shaved into a mohawk, so, for, for Children's Miracle Network, so. Whatever's needed, we're, we're good to go. Thank you.
I'm excited. I'm excited to see all what we can put together for a celebration. I, I love that it's in the evening. It gives a lot of opportunity for our community and the fact that it looks like at the, at least at this early stage, that Bayfront is going to be a, a donation to be there. That's awesome. That's a good partnership. So thanks.
And I'll just add, uh, we know that the location is not accessible to all, but we've also worked out, or already worked out transportation with our own transportation department to make sure that there will be, um, sites where families can be picked up and transported to the Bayfront. So we are working through a lot of things to make sure we're successful. We want all our families there.
Awesome.
Maybe they could be picked up in the IST 709 bus.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Which I saw.
Oh, you did see.
I saw it out at Her Point, yeah.
I think Member Lockwood can?
I, I just had a follow-up about the celebration at Bayfront. Did you have a committee made up of, uh, city folks and, I mean, is it a broad committee that's working on this?
Yes, it's a broad committee made up of city, uh, individuals who work for the city, individuals who work for various organizations. They partnered with me so far to, uh, discuss all of the various needs and we are, I'd be remiss to say that we are also continuing to look for other partners who would like to, uh, be a part of this, um, celebration of our schools. So I welcome individuals who, uh, would like to participate to please contact my office. Uh, we'll be happy for you to join the celebration and to partner with us on a variety of things. Thank you.
And then the last, um, part, so, um, are you going to, to leave us now Superintendent? We'll say goodnight there. You're gonna hang on for a while?
Yes, thank, thank you so much and, um, have a great night. If anybody needs anything, let me know. I'll also be, um, flying back in early tomorrow morning. I'll be there for tomorrow night's, uh, board work session. So, uh, I'll be up at probably about four tomorrow morning if you need anything. Thanks.
Okay. Okay, so then the, the next thing on our agenda under number, um, eight is just the scheduled meetings and that's in board book. Just a, a reminder that we're here again at East tomorrow at four o'clock. Um, our, then, you know, then our next meetings are not scheduled till August 4th and August 8th, and those are up at the United Healthcare Food Building. It is our policy committee, our monthly committee of the whole, and our HR business services. But that's in board book and also posted on our website for reminders. Next is our report of standing committees. So there is committee of the whole, human resources, and, um, policy committee did not meet. So I'll turn it over back to Assistant Superintendent Bonds for just a quick, uh, review of the committee of the whole meeting that was, that was held on July 12th.
Thank you, and I'll quickly walk through the presentations. There was a presentation, uh, by myself. It was just a student handbook update was provided with a few minor changes to, uh, the handbook. Also, uh, there was a presentation given by Mrs. Sparts, our Director of Elementary Education. It was a review of the new science adoption changes. Our early childhood and Head Start Coordinator, Sherri Williams, provided, um, a report regarding the Head Start efficiency that was, um, delivered also at that, the county meeting as well. And our Director of Secondary Education, Mrs. Jen Marv, provided a update, an update related to our secondary scheduling of task force. So it was a, like, variety of information. It was, um, a really lot of good dialogue that occurred during the meeting and, um, I want to thank everyone who provided a presentation, uh, during this month.
Any board members have questions? We were all there. We asked questions, but maybe we've had time to, to rethink about any of that topics? If not, um, again, I encourage our community. The Committee of the Whole Meeting is an important meeting for all board members. We're all there. And it's usually, uh, filled with presentations and information about ongoing initiatives, programs, needs of the districts. Um, uh, an opportunity for departments within our district to come and share what's going on within their curriculum or within their classrooms or their buildings. And so this was no different in the month of July. Science Department is looking at new curriculum. Um, there is, uh, working, uh, groups on schedules, hours in our middle school especially. And it's really worth the community's, um, time to, to look at that on our district's YouTube site. It is the Committee of the Whole Meeting from July 12th. So thank you for that, just a review. Then that brings us to our Human Resource Business Services, um, committee that met on July 12th as well. And I'll turn it over to, um, Chair of that program, of the, of that committee, um, Member Eater.
Thank you Chair Lohko. So we had a jam-packed meeting for HR Business Services and it was CFO Erickson's last meeting. So that was kind of sad, but fun to send her off. We started the meeting out with a guest presentation from Marsh and, um, Plannin Agency, who does our commercial insurance renewal. If you look at the HR Business Services agenda, you can, and you will also see today that the, um, resolution will come up today for FY '23 commercial insurance renewal. There's a couple of things I just want to make everybody aware of. Our workers' compensation coverage actually went down from our 2021 to 2022 year about 92,000. And that's a large part due to, um, the hard work put in, put in by facilities and all of our, um, staff here at IST 709 to make sure that we have a safe place for everybody to work and that we make sure not have, um, workplace accidents. What we did see was an increase in our coverage for, um, coverage for cyber. We went up in that, but we do have some of the highest coverage available. And a lot of that work, um, done to make sure that we have all of the coverage that we need for our, um, cyber work is through Bart and his team. When insurance carriers come and look, they make suggestions for us and, and Bart and his team make sure and follow those suggestions so that we have a, as reliably safe network as we possibly can. And that allows us to get, um, coverage against any sort of cyber attacks and crimes. So Bart, um, anything to add on that?
Uh, I, I do not. I know we'll be sending stuff out to the district on stuff that we have to do. You know, that will impact our users by office first, yeah.
But it's really important because it makes sure that we have access to coverage, to insurance coverage, and it keeps our network safe. Is there, uh, Mr. Spooner, is there anything to add about workers' compensation or anything? We just had a good year, good couple of years.
We've had several good years and that's positively affected our, uh, our rates and we had, should, we really have to, with all the hard work that everybody has done to bring the lottery to all of them.
Yeah. So you can go ahead and look back at that meeting if you want to see the presentation, but overall, we'll be spending, our total estimated annual premium this year will be about a million dollars. So. Our next report was our, um, Human Resource Report. And you can see as, as usual, we have our staffing updates. And on here, we are looking, if you turn around and look at the back of, um, the HR staffing report, sorry. You can see all of the current openings that we have as of July 8th, 2022. And I just want to take a minute to say we have quite a few paraprofessional spots open that we're looking to fill. But, um, Director Severance, um, Communication Officer, um, Wellens, and Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent did some outside of the box thinking. And we have a bus cruising around town that, um, has advertising for jobs that we have available here at IST 709. And then also advertising what a great education your kid can get here when you come to the Duluth Public Schools. Of note on this HR report summary is also, um, a new service that we will be looking at and voting on today, I believe, which is the Teachers On Call, which will be a, um, contract that we'll be looking at that will be working with Teachers On Call to help us staff our substitutes so that we have better access to a substitute pool. And this is both for teachers and paras, Director Severance, correct? Um, this current company, Teachers On Call, works with several different, um, districts around the state, including some up in the Iron Range and then larger ones within the cities. So hopefully we will be able to have some success this year in recruiting our substitute teachers, which will allow, um, sort of bring some of the stress levels down for our teachers when they don't have to quit, try to fill in, um, for substitute teachers. So, next, we have our business services. We have a verbal report from CFO Erickson. We have no financial education topics. Next, we have an enrollment report. We did not have one this month. They will resume in October 2022 when our students are back in our buildings. Next, we have our, um, sorry, I'm getting a little lost here today. Next, we have our child nutrition report where we can see that we had no new employees hired. We had a promotion, um, and you can see on that report that we have several jobs open in our human nutrition, in our child nutrition department. So hopefully when people see that bus cruise around Duluth, they will definitely want to come and apply. I want to make note of the summer meals that are being served to all children 18 and under. Currently, right now, we're serving about an average of 150 breakfasts and 300 lunches. And you have access to those, let's see, you have them at which schools do we have? I'm trying to.
Myers Wilkins and everything west.
Myers Wilkins and everything west, thank you. So Lincoln Park, Piedmont, MacArthur. Do we have them at Denfeld this year? I don't, I don't think so. No, not at Denfeld this year, right? Okay.
And then Stowe.
And Stowe, thank you. All right, so that's our child, our facilities department report. We talked a little bit about, um, the number of work orders that have been completed. We looked at our capital construction. Our Denfeld Tower work is progressing well. It's a really difficult project, but hopefully once we're done, we should have no more maintenance for over 40 years. And, Mr. Spooner, didn't they say they're going to actually put some of the work they're doing on the Denfeld Tower up for some?
Right, the design professional team, which is led by Inspec over the two cities, they're submitting this project for a national competition or an award because of the difficulty and the challenges that they're finding on this project. And since you brought it up, I'll give it another challenge we just saw. I'm gonna have, as you're driving by, you look at all four sides, there's the big clock faces and the brackets that hold those clock faces on and bolts have rusted off and they're just barely, they're held by a single bracket. And now we, we have to reenter and reattach the clock faces. So I mean, it's one thing after another, but what we get done, it will be good for 50 years, but.
It's the gift that keeps on giving.
It truly is.
Um, the Congdon Park window replacement project is going well and they're over halfway done.
Correct.
Um, Myers Wilkins has some work on a roof section. Um, and then what is also great to hear for Denfeld is the new, um, special education bathroom construction has started. And that bid, um, actually looked cheaper this year than it would have been last year.
It was.
So that's always great news. Um, we are still working on public school stadium trap lane one, so now that's currently the bonding agent. And hopefully we will hear more about that before the Denfeld Tower is done maybe even. Construction on the hill is progressing. I noticed every time I drive by that there's quite a bit going on. And we, you shared with us that the footings and the foundations are being poured, or have been poured.
Correct.
Or in the process of pouring them.
In the process of pouring them.
Pouring them, that's great. Um, I do want to bring note that there are 15 vacancies in the cust- in the custodial operations. And hopefully we can get those filled so that we can keep our, um, schools clean and safe and ready for our students and staff. Um, a yearly summer project is all of our gym floors are being refinished. Um, they have two, we have two people crew, two-person crew working to take care of that, so that's great to hear. Um, all of our playground inspections were completed and we'll make sure to get those repairs done over the summer. We've done some work in Lowell to make sure that our radios work in Lowell. Um, OSHA came and visited, visited us. This was our first OSHA inspection in over 30 years, correct? And there were four citations. That's really impressive. Two of the violations have been abated and two of them will be resolved, um, coming up in the school year. We will talk later on in this about our long-term facilities planning. Would you like to talk a little bit about that now, Mr. Spooner?
Sure, I, I, I guess I should start. Is there anybody that has specific questions that we could lead up on? That watched, uh, the meeting last week?
I think what was really important is now that we have sold hocks, our average age of our buildings has come down.
To 33, I believe, instead of 44 years old.
So, yeah.
So the daily sold hocks, we essentially raised 60 million in debt. So that, that was a good thing to do.
Yeah, so just to reiterate that, we brought the average age of our buildings down to 34 years and we got rid of a tremendous amount of debt.
Right, and if you're looking at the document, we've got FY, uh, critical years to look at are FY '22, '23, and '24. FY '22 is actual as of July 7th, so work that has been completed and we've paid formally, know what it costs, the actual numbers are in the document. So FY '23 is amended, that's an ongoing, and that'll, that'll end June 30th of next summer. That's to a point where we know where at today and what we believe we're going to spend. FY '24, which will start July 1st of next summer, is the proposed projects that we're going to do. And then FY '25 through '32 or '33 is just the projects that we know we are going to undertake. We did sell the bond, the LTFM bond, and we did not charge many projects to the bond this year, and that's more of a CFO Erickson type question, but it was related to the debt service and where we want to have our expenses and our revenue. I hear from them that I come to you, I'll have FY '25 as the year that I'll be looking to get approved and that most likely will have bond projects on it. There's still LTFM, it's just a different funding source. So we'll be levying LTFM and we'll be using the bond for LTFM. And it gives us a little, little more flexibility in the way we use money and the way we levy for the money. But those are kind of the highlights. I'd be glad to answer questions.
I guess what I took away from the, the meeting the other night, last week, was that it's a fluid 10-year plan. And I think you mentioned something about the Denfeld, uh, wasn't on, wasn't on your plan two years ago, but it is a need. And so it becomes a part of your plan. So some other thing that mu- must have to kind of wait a year, is what I got from it.
CFO Erickson and I decided that instead of identifying and giving you projects '25, '26, '27 and on, it doesn't really mean a lot to give those projects because it can change tomorrow.
Right.
Denfeld Clock Tower, we had bricks falling down in January in the wintertime and it was because it had rained and water got behind the brick and pushed it out. And that's a million-dollar project and that changed the whole plan. And the plan really is fluid documented. Something could happen tonight and it could be different tomorrow. So I'd like to try and give you accurate information that your constituents can, can read, about, and see and know what to do rather than guess at projects that are maybe three or four years old that may, may not happen for six years or it might be done sooner.
And I think one of the most important takeaways is when we look at our long-term facilities, um, maintenance 10-year plan is selling hocks reduced our building age quite a bit and it put us in a better financial position because we're not responsible for that building anymore.
Exactly, that was a huge. That was a huge investment that we would have to make to stay there. And one thing I'd like to add is that with the completion of that small roof area at Myers Wilkins, the building envelope of all our buildings is the critical piece. And keep the weather out, good roof, good top line and good windows. We are really in good shape. Every building has a new roof on it since 2008. And every roof has a 30-year warranty, which started in '08. So we've got a good number of years before we have to start looking at the roof. But somebody in my role in 20 years might say, wow, what did this guy do to me? But it just happened that we did all the roofs at the same time and building envelopes are good. We've got some potential future window projects like Denfeld, but we're really in good shape and focused on the interior.
Thank you very much.
Do you have any estimate on how much time you and your team would spend just dealing with the challenges of maintaining hawks over a week or a month or a year? And now you don't have to do that, you could focus on other priorities.
Right. We, that's really hard to estimate because it was variable with things that were going. You'd have a bad week and then a good month or a bad month and a good week. But it's really hard to quantify the time you spent. It wasn't huge, it wasn't really a bad building and we deferred to it. And that's because we anticipated we were either going to sell it or we were going to vacate and renovate the whole thing. So it was kind of a building on hold.
Are there any other questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Spooner, and we appreciate all the work you do very much.
Thank you.
Moving on next, we have our Technology Department report. And currently, we have some E-rate and some bids that will go out when we talk about some phone service lines, some data center call location services, and some E-rate network switches, which will be district wide. And Bart, we said that would probably be around $1.2 million?
For the switches after, after the E-rate.
After the E-rate.
5%.
You can go ahead and look at the report and see what the Help Dust Ticket looks like. Look like. And current projects that Technology is working on is installation of new Dell Precision Workstations at the two fab labs and the graphic art labs at the two high schools. We know that the systems will be upgraded to their, currently to what they have. Installation of new Dell desktops, desktop systems across the district. Imaging all Windows 10 systems across the district to meet our cyber insurance policy requirements. Bart, could you talk a little bit about that piece of it, which is the, what we're doing with Windows 10 to meet our cyber insurance policy requirements?
Yeah, we're going around to all the district computers, all of those head desktops. Reimaging, we have Brendan Rich, all of their security patches on them. And then any of the old software that is not supported, that will be removed during that engine. So we're fresh images. Because that was one of the requirements with our cybersecurity, we will have to do on this first. Any unsupported devices, software, online network have to be.
I know, work on that as well. Moving along.
It is.
It is progressing. Next, we have our Transportation Report.
Can I ask Bart a question? I don't know if it's appropriate for Bart or just our leadership, but it seems to me in the review of all that went on in the legislature, legislation this term, wasn't there some specific things in technology about, I think we've talked about data here before, but even about the use of technology in classrooms, especially in our younger, is that your department? Is that your department?
It's actually some homework department.
Yeah.
We're working on that with Mike and Sally.
Okay.
The Digital Innovation Team or identified that software. So this is the Student Data Privacy.
Correct.
So parents need to be aware of all the services we use for their students. We need to help, I think we've done a good job with that with our, with our end of year ones. But we have to actually include all of it, even if it is not part of the COPA or this, parents don't need to sign up on that. We still need to make them aware of any of the services that our teachers use online with their students.
Seems to be getting a lot of play in school board updates from MSBA and from newspaper articles around our state, other school boards that are kind of asking for more feedback or just knowledge about what we're doing as a district. I think there's some legislation about our pre-K through kindergarten, about how much screen time teachers can use in their classrooms. And that, that must be fairly new for our staff.
Yeah, I think that would pass by first. So that's something that he and Sally and the other team will be looking at. You know, with that tablets, not all the schools in pre-K decay have access to tablets. We only have like eight tablets per classroom.
That's true. That, that's a good, a good, a good reminder for our board. That might be different from other boards in other cities that are reaching out to us to see what we're doing. That's kind of how the school board sometimes happens, is other districts want to know how we're dealing with this latest update from the legislature. And so, thank you. Anything else?
And that's something, if I could, and that's something that we can bring to the Policy Committee as an update and/or the Cow Meeting as an update as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Moving on, our Transportation Report. We have 65 trips that happened in June. We had some cancellations. And so far in July, we have 10 trips scheduled. There have been no recently hired drivers. I do want to make note that in the OSHA inspection, there was a problem with the stairs. Apparently, we had a mezzanine level, which I love thinking about in our transportation building that will no longer be accessible. Will our, will our new bus barn have a mezzanine level, Mr. Spooner?
It would be actually doing.
Doing, okay, that's even better. All right. So we're going ahead and doing our routine general bus maintenance. And our average age of our fleet is still about 7.2 years. And our current mileage is around 70,000 miles. So that's our Transportation Report. We have resolutions coming through for NCBA union contract, our Directors' Union Contract. Then we'll be looking at acceptance of grants awards, our EEA contract, and our Clerical Union Contract. Am I correct on those? Okay, we will not have our DWIAA contract. We'll look at that unhogus. Great. We also have some other resolutions that are going to authorize a development agreement with the City of Duluth regarding the Central on the Hill property. This is good news because this allows us to do some work when we talk about selling that property. And then as Mr. Spooner talked about, we had our FY '24 Long-Term Facilities Maintenance 10-Year Plan. And then also, we will have our FY '23 Commercial Insurance Renewal. What we have located on our Consent Agenda is our HR Staffing Reports. Hold on, I'm getting. Is our HR Staffing Report. Then also, we have our Financial Reports. This will come later. They're still doing some work in the auditing. We also have fundraisers. Next, we have bids, RFPs, and quotes. We have a bid for the Central High School demolition. That's bid 1306. And then we have some other informational items that does not require any action, which was a district property update, looking at expenditure contracts. And we had quite a few expenditure contracts this year. And this had to do with a lot with facilities, correct?
Correct. Annual tenure contract extensions or new bills. The time of year when we bring this.
When we bring a bunch of these through. So if you look at your expenditure contracts, there's quite a few there.
There's 160 pages.
Yeah.
Not all of them are, but I did, you know, I, you know, it was interesting to look at all the, between the checking of the fire, the fire, the fire.
Alarms.
Alarms and.
Fire alarms, fires.
Yeah, snow removal, carpeting and, and yeah, all of that stuff. Security systems, yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot.
And then there was, there was quite a few contracts then through, I would believe it would be HR Director Severance with some of the contracts, especially for the summer programming through, there was, seemed some contracts for our Native American summer programs, I noticed too, with, with those contracts. So just, thank you for 160 pages of contracts. Of which that Teacher On Call was in too. So board members really have any questions about, more questions about Teacher On Call? The contract for that, for our partnership with them is part of our Consent Agenda tonight. And it's, it's got a lot of the questions that I know I personally had or, but I also know that Superintendent Magus, Assistant Superintendent Bonds, and HR Director Severance know this contract, think, you know, think that it's good, but, and know that it's, you know, it will be one way that we can see if we can do more there. So I just, it's kind of buried on like page 89 or something. But it's, it's there as a contract and it talks a lot about the expectation and the agreement between us and Teacher On Call.
And Director Severance, we have the capacity, if it doesn't work out for us, to be able to leave that contract.
Correct.
So that's one of the things I think is important to note with that contract is if it doesn't seem to be working out for the district, then we have the ability to back up that contract.
Is that a one-year contract? At that.
We, we do have a one-year, but we can, we don't have to commit to a year. So after a couple of months, it's not working out, we can sever ties.
Any other questions on any of the expenditure contracts? We had no, no cost contracts this, for July. And then we, next are our revenue contracts that were signed that had to do with life touch, our annuals to pictures, one of my favorite times of the year because my boys always look like a mess by the time they get there. And then of course, Justin, to look at yearbooks for East and Denfeld. Then for our grant applications, we have one from the Northland Foundation for ECFE Coordinator. That was a $4,000 grant. And this is looking at alignment between our early childhood programming to grade threes in areas such as transition, curriculum equity, and family engagement. We have no change order signed and we have nothing to refer to the Policy Committee. And that ends my report on HR Business Services. Thank you. Chair will follow.
I know that some of us jumped in at different times when Chair Eater shared, but you, you know, feel free to ask questions of any, anything she covered that you might want more information or, or just some direction.
It was a busy meeting.
It was a busy meeting.
Actually, I have a question. This is for David Spooner. I always am interested and I know the public is on the yearly inspection, inspection.
Inspection.
Inspection, sorry. Expecting, someone's expecting of the playgrounds. And do you just want to kind of highlight a little bit, when you do that, what, what you do?
Well, I don't personally do it. Matt Johnson, our Health and Safety Coordinator, he's certified and he does this. And he looks at everything from fall protection to nuts and bolts. If there's a hazard where a child may catch their shirt or cut themselves or a slide that's got a slice in it or damaged two steps. Or we really focus on fall protection. Swing set, what they call anti-rat collars, so you can't wrap the swing up and those get damaged. We look at every component and anything that's worn, we order and fix over the summer and replace. So essentially, in, or at Labor Day or end of August, every playground has been looked at. Fall protection is at the proper depth or greater because we usually go up to 15 inches on wood fiber where it needs to be 12 inches. We have room for settling. But we, we look at everything and ensure that it's back to what I would say would be the show.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for that question too. Because even, you know, like I didn't realize that we do asbestos re, you know, reinspection and that was part of that 160-page contract. And, you know, there's just a lot of different things. I'm sure it's been in our board book every year and I just couldn't look at them this year. I don't know. But it was, it was interesting to see how many things happen every year from playground to asbestos to chillers to snow removals to fire. Keeps you busy. Thank you. Any other questions?
A lot of resolutions.
A lot of resolutions. We'll get to those. So next, moving on, is our number 10, our General Board Committee Updates. And this is for any of us that serve on committees within that we get assigned in January, whether that's within our own district with our, our different committees we sit on, intergovernmental or Parks and Rec or. Any?
July was a quiet one.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. I know that I'm going to share with board members at the end of the meeting, or I could pass them out now. I am, as part of the AMSD that we're all part of, you can go. They have meetings Fridays at 7:30 till about 9:00, once a month on a Friday. It's our commitment. It's the AMSD, what is it, Association of Minnesota School, oh, you should, I should know what it stands for. Association of Metropolitan School Districts. That's what it is. Because it's right on here. But they're having a in-person or an online Zoom workshop on August 10th called The Long Now, Considering the Big Picture of Education Transformation. And these are Minnesota Superintendent School Boards coming together with leadership. And I'm going to make sure that you guys have this invite. And if you are available to go, it's August 10th from 2:00 to 3:30. And we could let Patty know there's a registration that needs to happen, but I'll have that at the end of the, of the meeting. And that's part of the AMSD that we all are part of. I attend some of the meetings, but you're also able to. And they, and I traditionally do it by Zoom. You can go in person, but it just hasn't worked out for me to go down to 7:30 in the morning in the cities, Zoom. So. Moving on to our Consent Agenda. So we've had a copy of our Consent Agenda. It usually is just things, I know I've got it here somewhere. I'm like. Our Consent Agenda has approval of past board minutes. It has some of the things that Member Eater just went through with Business Services, with bids or financial reports or fundraisers. It has our Head Start information on it. And you got a, in Board Book, there was more added. Executive Secretary Paquette, do you need to remind us about any of that? But there were four items under Head Start that we, like Transportation was part of it. We, we transport four-year-olds and there's a special, there's a special.
Waiver.
Waiver that we need to know. And that's all on Board Book and it's on our Consent Agenda. It's just something that we did not talk through with Director Williams at our Cow Meeting. It is, yeah.
She did bring it to the April Cow Meeting.
Yes.
Yeah, and it just didn't get on our school board agenda for that month. So we're just.
And that's that Transportation waiver we did last year. It's kind of an annual thing.
I think all of these things that, that we have on our Consent Agenda tonight, but like Executive Secretary Paquette said, it was in our April. We just didn't carry it through into our school board meeting.
That's right.
So I'm looking for a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
So moved.
Member Eater makes the motion. Do I have a second? Member Sandholm's seconds. Is there any discussion on his Consent Agenda? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Our Consent Agenda passes seven to zero. That brings us to our Resolutions. And there is A, B, C, D, and F, and G, and H, and I. So you've all, you've got copies of all of them? And so I'm just going to start down with Member Eater. And this is how they are in my packet. Maybe they're the same in your packet. So Member Eater will do the NCBA bargaining. And Member Kirby will do the Directors Bargaining. Member Lachler Kemp will do the Resolution on Grants. Do you see, I mean, I'm kind of going right through. Then there's a resolution. I'll do the Executive Employees Association. And then Member Eater will do the Education Minnesota Duluth Clerical Bargaining. Member Zadelski does the Agreement with the City of Duluth Regarding Central on the Hill. And Member Sandholm will do the last one, the Long-Term Facilities Maintenance.
Did you do, oh, you need this one to the Resolution Authorizing a Development Agreement? Is that one in there, correct?
Give memory too. I gave Member Eater two.
You gave the merger two, would you?
Oh, did I say Member Oswald, I looked at you, it's not Oswald.
Alright. But which one was that? That was for Education Minnesota.
Okay, thank you. And I'm missing one?
On the resolution authorizing a development agreement with the city of Duluth regarding Central on the Hill.
I'm reading that.
No, yeah, I gave that to Member Zadelski. Okay.
Sorry, Chair.
That's okay. Do we have to vote on these separately?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Can I just point out, for the first two resolutions, they're just corrections of the date. So you voted to approve those contracts last month, but the dates on the resolution were wrong. So they're just, they're not new contracts, they're just the dates were wrong on the resolution.
That's right.
Do we still have to vote on them, to accept them with that new date? Or?
I would, I would be.
Oh, okay, okay.
The resolutions were wrong, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect, okay.
Ready for me?
We are.
Chair will call. Be it resolved by OLEXE, we're looking at Resolution HR seven dash twenty-two dash thirty-eight ninety-two. Be resolved by the School Board of Independent School District seven oh nine, St. Louis County, that the collective bargaining agreement between ISD seven oh nine and the NCBAA bargaining agreement, a summary of which is in the hands of all school board members, be approved and adopted for the period of July first, twenty twenty-one, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, inclusive that the chairperson and clerk of the school board be hereby authorized to execute said agreement on behalf of the school district. And again, that's Resolution, Resolution HR seven dash twenty-two dash thirty-eight ninety-two.
Member Eater makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Member Zadelski, all those in favor of accepting the resolution as amended and with the right date, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Discussion? Motion carries, seven zero.
Discussion can move forward.
Oh, I guess, okay, wow, no discussion. Member Kirby?
This is Resolution HR seven dash twenty-two dash thirty-eight ninety-four. Resolved by the School Board of Independent School District seven oh nine, St. Louis County, Minnesota, that the collective bargaining agreement between Independent School District seven oh nine and Director's Bargaining Agreement, a summary of which is in the hands of all school board members, be approved and adopted for the period of July first, twenty twenty-one, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, inclusive, and that the chairperson and clerk of the school board be hereby authorized to execute said agreement on behalf of the school district. So I move to pass the Resolution HR seven dash twenty-two dash thirty-eight ninety-four.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Member Eater seconds. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Aye, I move Resolution B seven two-two, three nine oh three, to Resolution Acceptance of Grant Awards to Duluth Public Schools. Whereas Minnesota Statute four six five oh three requires a school district to accept grants by resolution expressed in the terms prescribed by the donor in full, and whereas acceptance of the grant in accordance with the donor's terms is in the best interest of the Duluth Public Schools, now therefore be it resolved that the Duluth Public Schools does accept of a low-described grant from said organization in accordance with the terms set forth herein. Be it further resolved that the Duluth Public Schools wishes to extend its grateful appreciation to this organization. And the organization is the Northern Regional Implementation Project PBIS, and that stands for Positive Behavior Interventions and Support. The author is Jacob Laurent, who is our climate coordinator. The award was five thousand dollars, and this is to support district work around supporting and maintaining PBIS, as well as assistance in onboarding new schools. We will be submitting a budget on how the money was spent, and have a district-wide PBIS team. So I move Resolution B seven two-two, three nine oh three.
Second. Oh, I'll second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution carries seven zero. Our next resolution is HR dash seven dash twenty-two dash thirty-nine oh four. It's the Executive Employees Association Bargaining Agreement. I make the motion that be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District seven oh nine, St. Louis County, Minnesota, that the collective bargaining agreement between Independent School District seven oh nine and Executive Employees Association Bargaining Agreement, a summary of which is in the hands of all school board members, be approved and adopted by the period, for the period, July first, twenty twenty-one, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, inclusive, and that the chairperson and clerk of the school board hereby authorized to execute said agreement on behalf of the school district. So I move Resolution HR dash seven dash twenty-two dash thirty-nine oh four.
Second.
Member Sandholm?
I thought we pulled this from the agenda.
No, it was the duia contract.
The which one?
Duia.
The duia, okay. Sorry, okay, make the motion, and then?
Second.
Second was Member Lachler Kemp. All those in favor of the Executive Employees Association Bargaining Agreement, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
I move Resolution HR dash seven dash twenty-two dash thirty-nine oh six, the Education Minnesota Duluth Clerical Bargaining Agreement. Resolved by the School Board of Independent School District seven oh nine, St. Louis County, Minnesota, that the collective bargaining agreement between Independent School District seven oh nine and Education Minnesota Duluth Clerical Bargaining Agreement, a summary of which is in the hands of all board members, be approved and adopted for the period of July one, twenty twenty-one, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, inclusive, and that the chairperson and clerk of the school board be hereby authorized to execute said agreement on behalf of the school district. I move Resolution HR dash seven dash twenty-two dash thirty-nine oh six.
Is there a second?
Second.
Member Sandholm second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
I move Resolution, Resolution B seven dash two-two dash three nine oh seven, authorizing a development agreement with the city of Duluth regarding Central on the Hill property. Whereas the school district is in the process of plating the Central on the Hill property and conducting site redevelopment activities on such property. And whereas the city of Duluth Planning Commission approved the school district's proposed plat, subject to certain conditions, one of which requires the school district to enter into a development agreement with the city of Duluth that provides that the school district constructs certain roads, public utilities, sidewalk and stormwater improvements, and demolish the existing Central High School building on the hill. And whereas city officials and district administration have negotiated such a development agreement, the form of which has been provided to the school board, the development agreement, now therefore be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District Number seven oh nine Duluth hereby approves the development agreement and authorizes the school board chair and clerk to execute the development agreement and all the other documents required for implementing the terms and conditions of the development agreement. And that's Resolution B dash seven dash two-two dash three nine oh seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Member Oswald seconds, all those in favor of the resolution, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Resolution B seven two-two, three nine zero eight. FY twenty twenty-four long-term facilities maintenance ten-year plan. Be resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number seven oh nine, St. Louis County, State of Minnesota, that the FY twenty twenty-four long-term facilities maintenance ten-year plan is approved. I move Resolution B seven two-two, three nine zero eight.
Is there a second?
Second.
Member Lachler Kemp seconds, the resolution, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This resolution carries seven zero. On our agenda, we have a Resolution B dash seven dash twenty-two dash thirty-nine oh nine. It's the commercial insurance renewal, but I don't see it in our packet.
I'm sorry, did I forget to print that?
There is not one printable online. I'm just, I'm looking at right now, it's item twelve, dot I, yeah, twelve I.
Oh, it should be, yeah, there's, oh, it just says renewal, there wasn't, there isn't a resolution. I see what you're saying. Ah, I see what you're saying. There wasn't a resolution, the number was created, but the.
The document.
The document wasn't typed up.
I can make a motion to approve the contract for commercial insurance renewal.
Because we got a report.
Yep, we have the report, yep, and we have a number. And, and so, somebody would have to second.
Second.
So, Member, Clerk Oswald has made the motion for B dash seven dash twenty-two dash thirty-nine oh nine. It is our commercial insurance renewal, and Member Zadelski has seconded it. All those in favor of passing this resolution, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. You're right, we certainly heard the presentation from our insurance.
I should have noted that HR Business Services. We fixed it, we got it.
So now that brings us to thirteen, it's special resolutions and action items. I see none. It brings us to fourteen questions and other. I see none, so I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, so, Eater makes a motion to adjourn, and Member Oswald seconds, we're adjourned.